I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, and now the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Here.
Supervisor Headland.
Here.
Supervisor Score. Supervisor Steen is excused. Supervisor Zons.
Present.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilsey.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn.
Here.
Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Whittle. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor McCullough.
Right here?
Supervisor Sean Breslin.
Here.
Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Robinson is excused. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Hartung.
All right. Now for approval of the minutes. I would entertain a motion for that at this time. Supervisor Headland and Supervisor Larry Bjork. Any discussion or speaking to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. I don't have anything due. Okay, on to public comments, and I think we are going to have a number of those. So please come up to the podium, state your name and address. And because we have a large number to get through and relatively long meeting, if you can keep your remarks to two minutes, that would be ideal. And in a perfect world, we'll keep this down to about twenty total. Oh, good. That looks very likely. Margie Hagerman.
And the microphone is on.
Yeah. I'm Margie Hagerman. I live in the town of Menominee. I'm speaking to the item twelve B on your agenda tonight. Healthcare. Healthcare in our country is an essential pillar for economic security for all. And our healthcare system here in the United States is broken. An estimated twenty million Americans have no health insurance. Forty-four percent have difficulty paying for their healthcare. Medical debt is the is the leading cause for bankruptcy, and we've all been invited to No Fund Me, to participate in No Fund Me campaigns or benefits to help with healthcare issues. Band-aids are applied to try to solve the issue. Such things as the Affordable Care Act, ACA, Medicaid in Wisconsin, it's called medical assistance, Badger Care, and even Medicare, which is fifty-seven years old this year, this summer. So the question I have is, is healthcare a right or a privilege? The health of Americans has been declining in recent years with lower life expectancy than other developed countries. This isn't due to COVID. This is not in regards to COVID issues. Most other developed countries have found ways to cover everyone through a national nonprofit health insurance system. Why can't the United States? Many of us here in Dunn County would like to see the following question on the November ballot. Shall Congress and the United States of America enact into law the creation of a public-financed, nonprofit, national health insurance program that would fully cover medical care costs for all Americans? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margie. If you could state your address as well, just for the record. Margie? Address as well, if you would, please. Could you state your address, please?
Oh, N four six two four, four hundred and fortieth street in Menominee.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael Brandt.
For the record, my name is Michelle.
Oh, Michelle, sorry. My apologies.
No, it's quite all right. In fact, well, I live at five fifteen twenty-first Street North in Menominee. I've used Mike my entire life until I ran for public office. And then I had to use my legal name, which is Michelle. And that's because I'm foreign-born. And my parents spoke French. And when I was a little tiny kid, that's what I understood. Oh, I went to school. The principal said, Michelle won't work your mic. So that was my name until way much later. Decades later, I ran for office and I had to use a real name. Had to learn how to re-sign it. So, but one thing about being a Swiss, French-speaking, is the Swiss are a democracy, and they've been a democracy way before the revolution here. They've been a working democracy for, I think, hundreds of years before it became a democracy here. So in our lifetime, we spoke about issues all the time at the table. Politics with normal speech. In America, it's not as well-accepted. I ran for office and actually won, which really surprised me. Oh, it was in upstate New York. And I got to be on the county board and on a town board. You're into a very difficult problem with healthcare. It has no simple solutions. And it's going to have to be worked out within the populace and the government. Oh, there has to be some controls. You can't just let everybody get anything they want for nothing. That doesn't work. So it's a complex issue. All this does is say, can we have a referendum on it and express our opinion? And I tell you one thing I think. Government is by the consent of the people. And since Citizens United decision was made, the people have been pushed out of government quite a bit, except in local and small community government. This is real government. If you put a referendum out, you're giving a voice to the people. You need to do that. Because we exist only by the consent of the people. And that's where government gets its strength. So I recommend you do that. Let them speak. Let them say what they think. It's the best thing we can do in a democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hope.
Hello, I am John Hope, seven fifteen River Heights Road in Menominee. Forty-two years a Dunn County resident. And I'm speaking on item twelve B. And I don't have any solution. I think we're a long ways from a solution. I just want to comment that the current healthcare system is seriously flawed. Without your benefit plan or a supplement or as old people, Medicare, you're basically one accident or one disease away from bankruptcy, which is not the way to live. And it's it's serious from the standpoint of how many people don't have a benefit plan and consequently, I know they've come to other organizations and there's a lot of gaps in there that people, well, what can you do for me? And they can't afford their drugs. They can't afford the next operation. So we get a lot of people that are basically throw up their hands and say, you know, I got a solution here, but I don't have money to buy the drugs. Some people get therapy, but they don't have the money to even go to drive to Eau Claire or Marshfield to get the therapy. So they come to other organizations, ask for money, and the other organization said, well, we can't keep funding all this. It's got to be in the plan. And I think we got to look at it like to say a comprehensive. Europe's got a lot of good choices coming like related to. And I think the big one is is the drug plan. Currently, the drug pharmaceutical system is totally stacked against the individual. Yes, they're working on something in Congress, but that's only for twenty drugs next year, ten drugs this year that they're going to negotiate. Basically, you're at the mercy of them, and I think it needs to be brought up. Like you say, a consensus that people talk about at Wisconsin level, and Wisconsin's been very progressive in the past. Hopefully, we can be progressive on this issue.
Thank you.
Tom Walsh. My name is Tom Walsh. I live at N four six nine three, four hundred and fortieth Street, Menominee, actually the town of Menominee. I want to put a practical face on this issue. I want to speak about my son, who is a small business owner. He, when he started about twelve years ago in his business, he had market insurance. It cost him two thousand dollars a month with a ten thousand dollar deductible. When the Affordable Care Act was passed, he then went to seven hundred and fifty a month with a five thousand dollar deductible. And that's what he lives with today. He can get one health, one exam, physical exam a year that will be free with that policy. But the rest of it, he pays for himself out of his pocket. When COVID hit, my wife and I just prayed that there would be a vaccine before he so he before he got COVID, because he was in the public, he met a lot, faced a lot of people. Fortunately, he didn't get COVID until he got vaccinated, and then he did get it because he deals with the public. He's it's just time. This question should have been dealt with years ago, not just you, but by all of us in our community. We need, we need actually a health insurance. We need Medicare for all, basically. To save small business owners, save people, you know, within our community that are susceptible to bankruptcy because they can't afford to pay for their insurance. And if they do have it, their deductible is so high, it really doesn't doesn't help that much. So we really need a national health insurance program, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Hogseth.
Thank you. My name is Steve Hogseth. Six fourteen Woodridge Court, Menominee, Wisconsin. When I was here last week for the for the committee meeting, and during that meeting, I overheard some comments from some of the members that was sort of like, well, you know, putting this on the ballot seems to be unnecessary, maybe a waste of time. With all due respect, I disagree. In seventeen seventy-six, thirteen American colonies had the audacity to declare their independence from Great Britain. Seventy-two years later, in eighteen forty-eight, a group of women met in Seneca Falls, New York, and they too had audacity. The audacity to suggest that women should have the right to vote. It took another seventy-two years of determined determination to ratify that right to vote, and the Nineteenth Amendment was passed in nineteen twenty. Now, after the meeting, I got thinking about some of this. It was about two weeks earlier that I sent an email to a large group of friends that I've met over my lifetime, and the topic just happened to be global democracy. So I thought about that email, global democracy. I thought about those women, the right to vote. I thought about healthcare. There are a hundred and sixty-seven nations that are ranked on their democracy platform in the United States. The top twenty-three countries of those countries, twenty-two of them have universal healthcare of some form. Do the math. That's ninety-six percent of full democracy countries that have universal healthcare. Now, the next tier down on government is flawed democracy. France is number twenty-four. It has universal healthcare. The United States is number twenty-five. It does not. I continued looking at those flawed democracies. And of the fifty-one flawed democracies, over half have universal healthcare. Of the twenty-three full democracy countries, that is one in sixteen global citizens that have universal healthcare in a full democracy. So that's that speaks loudly. It shows that democracy is a tough thing to get across.
Thank you, Steve. We need to get you to wrap up.
Okay, I will wrap up. I guess my bottom line is, let's be leaders. I encourage you to be leaders. I encourage you to get this on the ballot. And we need to advance the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Lorene.
We have one more person that would also like to talk after me, if that's all right?
Yep.
Okay. Her name is Lenore Mercer. If you want to put her name down also. Hello, my name is Lorene Vedder. I live at five one five twenty-first Street North in Menominee. I am a retired physician. And I thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. Last Wednesday, I also heard what the legislative committee was saying. They were concerned that if we put this on the ballot, maybe it would be detrimental to make any changes in healthcare. But I say that a non-binding referendum allows a voice for the people. And whether or not it passes, I can accept if it wouldn't, but whether or not it passes, it would start the conversation on how to solve this complex system that we have in our healthcare. It would help potentially to fix our broken for-profit healthcare system. The referendum, shall Congress and the President of the United States enact into law the creation of a publicly-financed, nonprofit, national health insurance program to cover our medical healthcare costs, is the referendum. And those in the audience who support having this referendum on the ballot, would you please stand up? We're hoping to get it on for November eighth. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Lorene. Lenore.
Good evening. My name is Lenore Mercer. My address is thirteen twenty twelfth Avenue East, Menominee. Menominee is my hometown area, but over a decade ago, when I, when the former governor suspended Badger Care, healthcare for Wisconsinites, I was working in a bustling Madison Clinic as an RN. With Badger Care being eliminated, we suddenly saw a huge surge of appointments by middle agers seeking exams, referrals, labs, prescriptions. I'll always remember, a decade later, it's as clear as it was yesterday. I'll always remember a clean-cut, hard-working, full-time employee father breaking down and saying, not worried about myself, but for my kids. How will they get to see a doctor? I thought this is so wrong. A few days later, the same scenario repeated itself. Another hard-working family man came in for a checkup and was worried about how his kids could receive healthcare. Again, I thought this is so incredibly wrong. They are working, supporting their families to the best of their abilities, playing by the rules. The whole family suffers without healthcare, especially children, going through developmental stages without screenings and vaccinations that will affect their health and productive productivity throughout their adult lives. About the same time, a coworker took an anniversary trip to Europe. While in France, she broke a leg. No worries. France has nationwide healthcare coverage, while her expenses, including a night over, including an overnight in the hospital, were covered. America is the only industrialized nation without nationwide healthcare among over twenty other nations that do. Our for-profit-driven system balloons profits for insurance companies and drug manufacturers, while millions of Americans can't afford healthcare. And our life expectancies are less than those of many of the industrialized nations who have national healthcare. Our Medicare system shows that national healthcare coverage works. Caps are imposed on what hospitals and doctors can charge. Plus competitive bidding keeps costs down. Recipients receive proactive care that helps prevent diagnosis disease from mushrooming into acute and chronic expensive diseases. Americans deserve better, just like citizens in other industrialized nations. It's time to move forward. It's time to do the right thing. National healthcare coverage would work. Americans would be healthier and expenses would be less.
Thank you. If I could get you to add your information to that, that would be great. That's, and Andrew has two that were sent in. Is there anyone else in the audience before we move to those? Doesn't look like it. Go ahead, Andrew.
On Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, at seven fifty-six this morning, Amy Riddle Swanson of thirteen thirty-one Matthew Street here in Menominee wrote the following. Hello, Dunn County Supervisors. First of all, thank you for your services, county board members, and the work you do. Being a fellow elected official serving on the Menominee Area School Board and a citizen of Dunn County, I implore you to please vote to put a non-binding referendum regarding universal healthcare on the November eighth ballot. I feel that it is important that we support universal healthcare for all, and although a non-binding referendum does not mean that the legislature legislature will take up, take this up, it's good to know how much support universal healthcare has in our county. In my mind, universal healthcare could be a money savings plan for our city and state workers to help with the presently high cost of health insurance. Health insurance is a right and not a privilege. Thank you so much for your consideration of this non-binding referendum for the November eighth ballot. Today at eleven forty-seven AM, Jim Tripp of six twenty-one Fagstead Street in Menominee wrote the following. The healthcare system in the US is one of the finest in the world with one big problem. The method for paying for it, primarily by the government and private insurance companies, is enormously inefficient. The US spends more on healthcare than any country in the world, but ranks in the range of tenth to twentieth in terms of outcomes. Every family in America, rich or poor, has their story of struggles with the insurance coverage or difficulty getting the care they need, or fear of major economic hardship because of medical costs. Doctors in the US spend about four times as much on their time on documentation, paperwork, than do doctors working in single-payer systems. In Dunn County, our HR department spends a significant amount of time simply administering this health insurance program. There are a couple of major arguments against national healthcare. One of them is that folks do not want the government to interfere between them and their health providers. However, under the current system, insurance companies do that all the time. Again, every family can tell a story of a medical care delayed, canceled, or changed because of an insurance company decision, and their motivation is their own company profit. Another major hang-up when discussing national healthcare is that it was a result in increased taxes to pay for it. Well, this is not true. The savings to employers and citizens would not be only offset by the increase in taxes. It would result in additional savings. The challenge would be to guarantee that those savings were passed along to the employees and not simply increased profit to the employers. For that reason, I would suggest the Dunn County Board to make a pledge to do that if and when national healthcare becomes a reality. It would be a win-win situation. Thank you for your consideration and best wishes for a productive and positive discussion.
Thank you, Andrew. And that will conclude the public comments section of the meeting. And we will, of course, be coming back to the subject of the healthcare referendum with item twelve B. Moving on, appointments. There are two appointments to the list that should be out on your desk. Do I have a motion to approve those appointments? Supervisor Morehouse and Supervisor Lino. Any speaking to the appointments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. The appointments are in place. Reported the county manager, Nick.
Good evening. This is, the first thing up is purchase orders over forty thousand dollars. Under county ordinance, county managers are required to report those to the county board. There are five of them this month. The first one to Farner Asphalt in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars sixty-six cents is for annual pavement markings on county roads. These all come from the highway department. The next one to Roland is for winter plow blades. The third one to Haas Sons is for base coating on County Highway V project. The fourth one to Rouski and Sons is for the highway, highway department roof placement, replacement that's scheduled for August. And the fifth one to Haas Sons again is for quarter-inch granite chips for annual seal coating of county, state, and town roads. Are there any questions about the vouchers? Okay, the next thing I have on is budget and capital improvements plan. The budget workshop will be on August thirteenth, which is a Saturday. We have it scheduled now to begin at eight o'clock. We have been meeting and working on the kind of presentation that we think will give you the most information. Beata, would you like to come up here and talk about it a little bit while she's walking up here? I'm going to just give a little summary. So we're going to start with an overview, very similar to what you would have seen in maybe September or October of the year. And then Beata has some spreadsheets where she's going to show comparative figures between last year's proposed or last year's adopted budget, what that adopted budget looks like in the real world. Because we have almost every month, I think this year, we've been making budget adjustments because of the receipt of grant funds, donations, and additional user fees. And it will illustrate the differential. Some departments, the cost is going to, or the, you know, the initial request is going to be higher than it was last year. Some last the wage grid is still not finalized. We still don't have the figures for the levy. Or any of the, you know, we just sold promissory notes for the capital improvements plan. That went very well. We got a real favorable interest rate, but that that stuff is going to have to be calculated in terms of how much will be needed in order to make the principal and interest payments next year. And insurance costs haven't been nailed down yet, and so there's still a little work to be done, but we're working with good numbers and projections, and we think that we'll be able to present you with some very good information so that you can ask questions and you can see what's going on in all of the departments. And I'm going to turn it over to Beata to supplement what I have to say. All yours.
Thank you, Nick. I think he covered the majority of that. I just also want to let you know that there will be packets, but those will be available online for you. We'll work with IT to find a best place to actually publish them for you. We'll work with IT to find a best place to actually publish them for you. Is, I believe they won't be public just yet as we're going through this workshop. But we won't be printing hard copies. There's a lot of moving and constant changes. Making a copies and then two minutes later, we're making another set of copies because that's how fluid it is. And that's how quickly things can change. So right now, we're just finishing up. Meeting with all the department heads to go over the final numbers. Not final, but the numbers that we have for round one. And I'm also verifying everything on our PAP. Make sure everyone is accounted for, that we have no one missing and also. Testing for validity, meaning that is my formula is working? Is it doing what it's supposed to do? Because ultimately, when we meet during the workshop. Hopeful to present some of a simulator, the one that we saw when we met for our CIP. If I were to change some variables, then I will be able to quickly do that and update so that we know what is that bottom line impact. But I'll say from that, anybody that has questions for me or concerns? Comments? As I said, you know, during this workshop, you know, we're gonna do our best. There's always a room for improvement. So of course, your feedback is very much appreciated. Once we go through that workshop and let me know what worked, what didn't work. Thank you very much.
All right, on to item nine, reports of departments, human services. Is Paula presenting that or is? I was, that was, I was what I suspected was happening or? And we, we failed, we were a bit remiss. We, we failed to introduce Paula before, before this moment. So if you would introduce yourself when you get up here, that would be great.
And I am Paula Winter. I am the new Human Service Director taking the role for Chris as she moves on to her next position, retirement and next position. Glad to be here.
So Paula comes to us from Pepin County. She had been there about nine years as the director. Prior to that, she was in Buffalo County for half a dozen years or so there. I've known Paula, I think, my entire time here in Dunn County over the last twenty one years. And she is going to do a wonderful job of taking over the reins of our Human Service Department. So we're super excited to have her. You have our report in your packet of information. And I would just ask if you have any questions or need any clarifications on that information.
Supervisor Bauer, then Supervisor Lina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On your financial report on a twenty twenty gross expenditures by section, is that twenty twenty or should that be twenty twenty?
Oh, it should be twenty twenty one.
So that's not two years old, this is last year's. Okay, on that expenditure section, you got one hundred percent. What's actually comes out to ninety nine point six. I don't know if you added that all up, but it's really not a hundred percent. And on the financial, the twelve thousand nine thirty one is actually over, because when I add them all up, it comes to twelve. Nine twenty five point oh oh eight, so it's about six thousand twenty nine dollars off.
Okay.
So I don't know where that money is not supposed to be. I don't know what that number is.
Some of it comes, some of it comes from just rounding percentages.
I was gonna ask about the rounding.
Yeah, it's so trying to get us as close as we could. It is not exactly exact.
Okay.
But yeah.
But six thousand seemed like a lot. I don't know if you rounded up that much or that, no, but.
Well, it's like if you take, so what I try to do is take the total expenditure from each section and then divide it into the total. And it's, you know, it might be, say, twelve point four percent. And I might drop it down to twelve point, by the time I add them all up and put them together. It's, I might, I might adjust some up a little bit, some down a little bit to try to get us, but they're within that percentage point for each of them. So.
Okay, I was just.
Good for you for doing the math.
Just put the numbers there. It didn't come out right. I just wanted to see why. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lina.
Yes, I, the question that I have is regarding the deficit for the zero to three. Child education program. Even when we have donations and and underfunding and. From the state of Wisconsin, we're still short three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that approximately? You know, the cost to the levy?
That is the approximate cost to the levy.
Is there any opportunity for additional grant funding or? Possible possibility of a legislative solution to this? You know, I mean, this is critical care for these, you know, young children. And and it seems like an absolutely worthy program and and how the state is not stepping up. And I was just kind of wondering, is there anything on the horizon that may change that for twenty two, twenty three budgets?
So it, so just by way of background, the birth of three program is an early intervention program for children under the age of three. Who are either, have been either diagnosed with a disability or are are delayed and. Failure to act on working on those delays could result in disability. So the best example that I could give you would be. You typically learn to speak before you're three years old. If you are two years and ten months old and you're not speaking, you're not yet disabled, but absent some perhaps speech. Therapy interventions, you may develop a speech disability. And so the birth of three program provides in-home cognitive teaching. Case management or service facilitation. Occupational therapy, physical therapy and speech therapy. It is a statutorily mandated program. It is, you cannot have wait lists. You need to serve every eligible youth who comes to you. And so the difference, so our allocate state allocation for the birth of three program is about a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. It was a hundred and twenty eight, eight, eighteen or something like that for forever. It went up a small amount. But the Wisconsin Counties Association and the Wisconsin County Human Service Association have been actively. Advocating for the last several budget cycles for an increase in that allocation because the counties are bearing such. Similar to the child welfare overmatch are bearing such, so much of the cost of that programming. So far, there's been no movement on that.
No. All right. Thank you very much for the information.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was fortunate enough to serve on Health and Human Services for a number of years and and. Are really recognizes that the talents that Chris has. And she's heard me say many, many times, where does the money go? Well. It blows my mind when I look at the financial statement, Chris, and we spend thirty percent, thirty eight percent. Of our budget on behavioral health services. And when in health and human services. And we look at where the money goes and we see the money going to other counties for bed space, for mental health. I guess my question to you is, in listening, in in listening to the presentations from the public today. About universal healthcare. Do you think there would ever be a universal? Can the counties get out from underneath some of that thirty eight percent of mental health care by a federal program of any sort? And then one last thing, for all our members in here, and we're all nonpartisan, of course. You know, when whatever governor is in the state of, in in Madison. And they talk about where they're going to spend money on mental health services. It seems to be a god darn political football and that just. Bites me to the bone. And this last time around where some money, you know, came into Western Wisconsin and made beds available. You know, that serves everybody. So. After all this diatribe. Is there any way to shift some of those costs that you see from local government for behavioral health programs to? You know, more of a. Everybody has a share in it.
So let me just lay a bit, little bit of foundation. So when you look at that first page and it gives you that breakout of that roughly. Sixteen million dollars, fifteen, whatever the number was for last year, that's our total expenditures. That's where, that's how much money we spent and the categories in which it was spent. All of those expenditures have some corresponding revenue. Sixteen percent of those expenditures are funded, sixteen to seventeen percent are funded with county levy. So the rest of them are funded with either fees for services like folks who come to. Our outpatient mental health clinic or are involved in the birth of three program. If there is a parental ability to pay in birth of three, there's a parental cost share. If you are of us, we do financial determinations that look at your eligibility for. Financial assistance with regard to obtaining behavioral health services. And so if you have some ability to pay, we're going to charge you that. We're going to bill third party payers. If you have another insurance source, we're going to bill Medicaid and Medicare. For the programs that we're able to build those things for. So there, so essentially our program is three part funded. One whole part of it, our state allocations are grants, as they're called, largely thanks to SAP. But they're state allocations that come to us. Second part of what is funded are third party collections. So private insurances, self-pay. Medicaid, Medicare. And then the last part of it is county levy. So. I think we are about, I looked at these numbers and I'm sorry, get confused from you. For the longest time, we were sixteen percent of the levy. I think we bumped up to about seventeen. We're also just about exactly the same amount of the entire county budget, just by fluke. So we're about sixteen to seventeen, maybe eighteen percent of the entire county budget, and we're about sixteen to seventeen percent of the levy ask. So in terms of healthcare, especially when it comes to behavioral healthcare, so I've always been, this, this is nonpartisan. I've always wondered how our eyes, our ears and our, our eyes, our ears and our teeth and our behavioral health. Don't all fit into being part of our health. So you don't, your glasses aren't covered as a general rule by your insurance, your teeth, you have to have special dental insurance. Try to get hearing aids. Anybody knows we all reach that age where we're going to need them. And then behavioral health services and substance use services. And so there's no doubt, so we saw a significant shifting of costs with implementation of the Affordable Care Act. No doubt that that relieved some of the burden of what was being borne on county levy expense prior to that time. So for instance, prior to implementation of the ACA. We would spend about a hundred thousand dollars or a little bit more every year are on uninsured hospital costs. For people who are emergency detained on a mental health emergency and didn't have another ability to pay. And statutorily, again, we were required to pick up that bill. We could bill it back to the consumers, but there was a formula that looked at whether or not they had an ability to pay. And if they didn't have an ability to pay, then the county was essentially responsible for that cost. We spent about a hundred or more thousand dollars a year on that. In the last probably close to ten years now, we probably spent under ten thousand dollars a year. So there's no doubt that there's been some cost shifting with that. With people's ability to have other insurance coverages, Medicaid expansion. To childless adults helped with some of those things. We serve a lot of people in our comprehensive community services program. Which is a wraparound program for people with mental health and substance use issues. They need to be Medicaid eligible. And then we bill that. It's a hundred percent cost-based reimbursed, which means that if we spend. A thousand dollars in that program, if we spend a hundred thousand dollars, if we spend a million dollars in that program and we are able to. To quantify and document that cost, we are reimbursed a hundred percent of that cost. So when that thirty some percent of the services that are being provided in behavioral health, it's really only a relatively. Much smaller amount of that that's actually levy. But in direct answer to your question, if people had affordable health. Insurance available to them and coverage to get them the care that they needed when it wasn't a crisis or emergency. It seems hard to not conclude that there would be cost savings to that.
Okay, Supervisor Keter.
Thank you. I was just wondering, what is a memory cafe?
A memory cafe is a program of the, of our ADRC, of our caregiver program. And it provides an opportunity for people who are providing direct care to someone who has memory issues. For them and the person they're providing care to, to come to the same event. And for there to be activities for both of them to participate in and in an attempt to give that person, that caregiver, a little bit of a break. So they usually have, you know, some type of a snack or meal. They usually do some kind of an act, activity or craft. It's just a fancy name for a, a, a group that gathers together of caregivers and the people that they're caring for that have memory issues.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Doesn't look like it. I think you're off the hook for the. For the moment. All right. Environmental Services, and this is another ensemble. So you have the report in front of you. Any questions you have are. Our ensemble of. Players here will endeavor to answer them.
And just a quick introduction, I'm, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Tom Carlson, the county surveyor. The Environmental Services Department is made up of three separate divisions. We have surveying, planning and zoning and land and water conservation. We don't have a true department head. It's, it's management by committee, if you will. So myself and fellow division managers. Collectively manage the Environmental Services Department. So I'll let the other two members introduce themselves. And then if you have any questions, we'd be certainly happy to answer them.
So this is my first appearance here in person. I'm Anne Wadarchek. I'm the Planner and Zoning Administrator. And it's nice to kind of see all of you finally.
And I'm Chase Cummings, the manager for the Land and Water Conservation Division, been the manager for about a, about a year and a half now.
All right, any, any questions? Supervisor Hoggan and then Supervisor Lina.
Hi, so for the, on page thirty five, the TRM grants that I see was denied. I don't know if you spoke to that on a previous meeting that I wasn't witness to, but could you speak to that?
Certainly. Thank you for the question. The, the TRM grants with TRMs, what we refer to as the Targeted Runoff Management Grant. It's a state grant program funded through the Department of Natural Resources. Particularly for exactly what it is targeted runoff management. So situations where we have farm runoff, soil erosion, you know, livestock, mineral type erosion. And in this particular case, this is, this is related to a malfunction mineral storage system. And, you know, when we look for, when we have those situations come up, as you all might guess, they're quite expensive. And to try to assist that farm in achieving compliance and addressing any concerns that they have or issues they're having on the farm. We need to look for outside sources of funding. This grant is one of those options, but it is a competitive grant amongst all seventy two counties in the state. And there's just so, only so much money that's available through those programs. And unfortunately, our grant did not rank high enough to be awarded the funding. And in fact, I think we lost the grant, lost the cutoff line by about four points. So we were right there. There, I will say that our application is being talked about still at the state level right now. Due to the circumstances of our application and how it ranked out amongst others. So I would look at that as being optimistic that the future of that grant isn't lost here in Dunn County. We may still pursue that for, for other avenues despite the current result. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Lina.
Yeah, Chase, I just had a quick question regarding, I've, I've heard that there's going to be some water quality testing. In different townships and in the county. I was wondering if you could maybe expand on that when that might be happening.
Certainly, thank you. So at the Capital Improvement Plan meeting held previously by the full county board. The use of ARPA funds was allocated for the administration of a private well monitoring program. We are currently working through the logistics of what that might look like. And certainly it will involve all towns and citizens that are willing to participate in such a program. Well, that basically will look like uh in general, trying to establish more private well monitoring within the county. We're trying to look at where we have data already. Uh look at the age of that data, the density of that data in the county and and trying to uh if you will, target areas that we don't have coverage. But certainly it will be uh open to any citizen that would like their private well monitored. Uh they should contact our office. Um we're looking for that implementation implementation of that to start in twenty twenty-three. And right now, um the consideration of uh one test um across the board at one point in time or uh splitting that up into potentially two tests depending on the the results of the first one. So looking at seasonality, uh sometimes, you know, with recharge rates uh in the spring of the year versus dead winter, those things could have different results. So we're trying to evaluate all that right now, but certainly uh if you were to share with your constituents their uh their interest in this and and they should contact our office.
All right, thank you very much. So twenty twenty-three then.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, looks like you are off hook. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Anthony. Chase. Chase, you might want to hang on just a second because we're we don't have, we're skipping over ten to to tater, and if we'd have questions, you'd no point in sending you all the way down and back again. Okay, so ten, the reports of committees, uh the auditor's report will be held over till September. Uh it is not ready at this moment. Uh on to eleven, the appoint, which is the to appoint the Planning, Resources and Development Committee to conduct a public hearing, first went Wisconsin Statute three-three two-six uh dash one or sub one regarding the formation of Tainer Lake Rehabilitation District. Nick, do you want to speak to that, or do you want to hand it off to Chase? Or Tom, do you want to? I figured, figured you were gonna. Okay. It's all yours, Jase.
Okay, uh thank you. Yeah, this um this topic is something that's been um um being been discussed within our division for a while as a result of of being approached by individuals um affiliated with the Friends of the Red Cedar Basin. Um they are um they're a group of citizens around Tanner Lake that um have expressed interest in developing a lake district for Lake Tanner. Uh through the past several, I would say probably almost a year now, uh been trying to work with them to establish what that criteria would be based on statute, chapter thirty-three, uh and some of the guiding documents that are available through um here within the state of Wisconsin. So on um July fourteenth, uh the petition was submitted. In order to submit a petition uh to form a lake district, you must have at least fifty-one percent of the landowners within the proposed district area um sign a petition uh requesting such of a such lake district. Uh there's another criteria with fifty-one percent of the ownership, but um this group chose to uh pursue the petitions of of fifty-one percent. Um I don't have, my notes are back at my desk. I didn't quite get a chance to go back there, but the percentage that was is obtained is uh yet to be to uh to be determined. Um our clerk, Andrew, go ahead.
Uh of the nine hundred and forty-five potential property owners, there uh were five hundred and eight um valid signatures that were submitted. Um equally, a total of fifty-three percent of the owners, so.
So
The threshold has been met.
Threshold has been met for the fifty-one percent. Therefore, um at this point in time, um according to statutes, the county board would refer um a back to a committee to hold a public hearing, required public hearing, to gather input from citizens and uh the petitioners themselves. Uh within um uh three months of that public hearing, the the Planning and Resource Development Committee, if that is the committee you choose to appoint this to, would provide a report back to the full county board as a result of that public hearing. And then uh this full county board would have another three months to um to exercise their decision on whether to uh create this district or not. Uh there are uh criteria within the statute as to what the petition must have in it as well as what your decision must be based on. Certainly, there's a lot of factors involved here as to uh from the logistics of meeting the statute, but also the intentions of of what the lake district uh might have uh in store for it. So um I guess at this point in time, um it's really a uh a decision at at of all of you to refer this to committee. Um there is a strict timeline that uh we as a county must follow in order to um meet the statutory requirements. Uh therefore, a public hearing will be, need to be held um by August twelfth um by whatever committee you you select to be for. So I think that's part of some decision-making that may need to take place yet here this evening, so.
Yeah, so this is essentially a statutorily required process vote to determine which committee will take this up to the public hearing. Um and after some discussions, the executive committee, uh PR and D is the lucky nominee. Um assuming that you all agree with that. Uh Nick, did you want to add anything else or?
Well, I I had the mic turned on in case I needed to. Uh it is staff's recommendation that the Planning, Resource and Development Committee be appointed by the county board to conduct the public hearing and report back. And in that process, the Chase will be involved in presenting information, and I will be involved in as corporation counsel in presenting uh the legal parameters, requirements of the law um and so forth. But uh tonight, it's it's an opportunity. Uh it's the, you know, it's the the petition was filed on the fifteenth. And so the county board is meeting now, and the county board could choose to have another meeting and do the public hearing itself. But we just for, I guess for efficiency's sake, we recommend the Planning, Resource and Development Committee be appointed by the county board to conduct the public hearing.
All right, so the next step for all of us is I would need a motion in a second to appoint the PR and D committee to that role. Uh Supervisor Morehouse and Supervisor Lino. Uh do I have any further speaking to the motion? Well, it looks like we've 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 covered it pretty well so far. So all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, and it's over to you, Tom. Um if the PR and D committee would hang out after this meeting, um so we can determine whether you need to have a special meeting or whether you can just cover it at the at the standard meeting, that would be great. And Chase too. Okay, thanks so much. Thanks, Jase. Okay, um. Twelve, so now we are on to twelve, a executive committee resolution approving uh budget adjustments for Human Service Department, Highway Department and Land and Water Conservation District. Conservation Division. Yeah, tripping over my tongue this evening. Um you've seen a bunch of these, pretty standard. Uh do I have a motion? Uh Supervisor Sean Resland? Oh, good. And Supervisor Pat Presland. I I'm staying on top of that. Do I have any speaking to the motion? Seeing none, this is a budget adjustment?
Yes, so requires two thirds.
So If the clerk will call a roll.
Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert votes, yes. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes, yes. Supervisor Hartung. Supervisor Hartung votes, yes. Supervisor Hedlund.
Yeah.
Supervisor Hedlund votes, yes. Supervisor Johnson.
Yeah.
Supervisor Johnson votes, yes. Supervisor Keneer.
Yeah.
Supervisor Keneer votes, yes. Supervisor Keter. Supervisor Keter votes, yes. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Lino votes, yes. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse votes, yes. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes, yes. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes, yes. Supervisor Rogers.
Yeah.
Supervisor Rogers votes, yes. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes, yes. Supervisor Thomas. Or Thomas votes, yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes, yes. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes, yes. Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Wilson votes, yes. Supervisor Whittle. Supervisor Whittle votes, yes. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes, yes. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes, yes. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes, yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes, yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes, yes. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Yes.
Supervisor Pat Breslin votes, yes. Supervisor Sean Breslin.
Yes.
Supervisor Sean Breslin votes, yes. Supervisor Calabrese. It's Calabrese votes, yes. Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Chair McCullough votes, yes.
Motion passes. Okay, on to twelve B, um the subject of of much public comment tonight. Um I would entertain a motion and a second so that we can actually put this on the floor for discussion. Uh Supervisor Lino and Supervisor Hagan. All right, uh that said, uh normally Supervisor Steen as chair of the legislative committee that forward this would be speaking to it. Um since he is not here this evening, um I guess I will do a very brief introduction, and then we will move on to uh any discussion that we will have. So um I think the speakers in public comment laid out the argument for the end goal in great detail. So I'm going to confine my remarks and make them very brief to the narrow question of referendum itself. Um well, I believe that we absolutely must find some answer to the healthcare problem. I I believe that it's a separate question whether county um ought to be holding referendum on it. I'm personally unconvinced that such a referendum will have any impact on its intended goals, but I believe that a critical part of the job of the county supervisor is to be open to the voices of our citizens. I know that Supervisor Steen wants the legislative committee to be an option for citizens to bring things forward to the county and potentially then to forward them to this board if if that committee feels that is appropriate. Um in this case, uh the arguments made by the citizens and in committee convinced us that we should at least move it forward this far. And I think many, if not most of us, believe we should move it on to a referendum, um but that is a question for this board. So um if Larry, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Uh, broken record, what will it cost Dunn County to have it placed as a referendum?
Uh
Andrew?
That's an excellent question. Um there is a a small cost associated with mostly dealing with publishing of the uh components of the referendum, but that's pretty much it. There's room on the ballot. Most likely will be room on the ballot um for the fall election post uh partisan primary. So it would just be a publication cost.
Uh Supervisor Barrier.
It is not. Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Thank you. Um I'm in favor of this referendum, and if you give me two minutes, I can explain why. Um I want to look at this from the perspective of the county's budget and make the case that the current system is not a responsible use of taxpayer dollars. So when I first started looking into the question of how much the county's spending on health insurance, um I looked at the numbers from the meeting packets from the Committee on Administration for the last three months. And what I found was that the county has spent around five hundred thousand dollars each month on health insurance for the past three months. And that's half a million dollars per month. When I first saw this, I thought that there must be some mistake. Um so I followed up by looking at the one-page uh twenty twenty-two budget summary, and somehow that was even worse. Um this year, we've budgeted around ten million dollars per year for health insurance. That's around eleven percent of the total county budget. Not just personnel costs, but all county operations, including facilities and equipment, the entire highway department, the nursing home, everything. Eleven percent just on health insurance. So we're spending a lot. But when we compare that to what the employees are actually getting, it's a pretty bad deal. Just like everyone else, they're part of a system where delays and even outward denials of care are routine. I don't know how anybody can look at this and think that this is a good situation, but it's the system that we're stuck with. And I believe that as elected officials and stewards of taxpayer dollars, we have a responsibility to demand better of the federal government that serves us. In closing, let's think about what we could do with that money instead. So a couple of months ago, we had a good discussion about the wheel tax, and many of us, including myself, are worried about the potential impact this would have on people who might not be able to afford it. For comparison, the wheel tax brings in only about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. That's peanuts compared to the ten million we're but budgeted to spend on health insurance this year. Seven hundred thousand versus ten million. Instead of wringing our hands over the wheel tax, we could just be fixing the roads instead. So for all these reasons, I think that we as elected officials really have a responsibility to advocate for a more efficient healthcare system. And this is why I'll be voting in favor of the referendum tonight.
Thank you, Supervisor Barrier. Any other comments before we vote? Supervisor Hagan.
Hi, so after watching the legislative committee uh discussion on this, there are three points I'd like to speak to um about this vote. So first thing is, if you wouldn't indulge me, um is I'm one of the newer people on this board. Elected this spring and one of the largest uh turnovers that the board had in quite a while, I believe. And this is the first time an advisory referendum has come to this board. And I want to speak to what exactly an advisory referendum is, um because I had a do a little background on it myself, and I figured it'd be something useful for all of us. An advisory referendum from the Wisconsin Elections Commission is just a non-binding question, uh which is a poll to the public. So non-binding, there's no legal effect to what we're voting on here today. It is merely asking like whether the public likes the Packers or the Vikings or God forbid the Bears. Um and so there's nothing tied to this. There's no ordinances. There's no levy. There's nothing like that. It's mainly asking for the opinion. Now for the question itself, my point two is like some of the discussions I heard were, what is the end goal of this? What is it going to achieve? Um these questions asked by committee members, I believe, are essentially irrelevant to our vote because our thoughts about what the question is, is for the November ballot. What we're voting on is the advisory referendum itself. The question could be anything really. Um it could be, like I said, um what's your favorite football team? So um after that, the other thing I was, I heard was, is it germane to the board's interests? Like the timing issue, why November, and is this something that the board should really take up? Um so is this similar to any past resolutions that have happened? Um I looked up a few um at the municipal level. Uh in Colfax, April twenty fifteen, there is an advisory referendum to build a new library or a multipurpose building. Uh county level, there is one in two thousand nine to raise state imposed tax ceiling or tax levy limits. Um there's most recently in Eau Claire County, uh cannabis legislation and clean water. And at the federal level in twenty fourteen in this county, it was um a question of uh only human beings endowed with the constitutional right and money is not speech. So at all different levels, there have been advisory referendums, not just at a county-specific level. So this question speaks to a federal level. It is still within um the county's ability to have an advisory referendum on, even though there's no specific actions tied to it, which honestly is the point of a advisory referendum. We're just looking for advice from our constituents. And then um timely, um why November instead of like April or anything like that? Uh the legislative committee themselves said that they are going to meet with elected representatives at the state level in January, I believe, sometime early next year. So a question like this on the November ballot would give enough time to get that data to then present to um the legislators at that time. Um and then supervisor Barry spoke to the um relevant question of the cost, uh our current cost to the counties, and I even looked it up myself in the adopted budgets. So like for twenty twenty-two, it's requested twelve point five million dollars. And so that, though, again, I say, is irrelevant to the question that we're being asked, which is just are we okay putting an advisory referendum and asking the public's opinion? And about the public's opinion, is there any public interest on this question? I mean, this is the most people I've seen um in person and submitting questions since the uh ATV County Road Expansion a while back. And even just in account, there is more people on this question in this room than there was for me to get myself on the ballot in the spring. And so if there is that many people, I believe it's relevant. So despite what the actual question on the ballot is, what we're voting on is an advisory referendum. And in that manner, I believe it is our duty to put the advisory referendum on so that we can ask the public, the citizens, how they want us as a county to proceed in the future.
Thank you. Any further comment before we vote? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Looks like we will be having it on the referendum. All right, that's twelve B. So that also answers the question of pressuring your legislators, does it work? It looks like it. All right. Thirteen, um so we are now going to go to the question of the county manager. Um we can, if anyone really, really wants to, uh go to closed session. I don't think there's any need, but if someone insists, we can certainly have the vote. Okay. So no closed session. Onto the appointment of the county manager. And I guess that the person to speak to that again would be me, although I guess for proper, for proper proper order, we need the resolution, so I need a motion and a second. Supervisor Morehouse and Supervisor Quinn. That was a lot of hands. Okay. So I am very pleased that after the process by which we selected county manager candidates and interviewed them, the the committee, the executive committee decided to offer the job to Chris Corporal to forward to this board for a vote. Many of you already worked with her and know her well. She's a dedicated longtime employee with twenty years of experience working for the county already, having most recently served as the Director of Human Services, which is of course one of our largest and most complex departments. I think that she will do an excellent job and that her proven dedication to the people of Dunn County and this organization will serve us very well. Especially at a time of change, we've had an enormous amount of turnover. As Supervisor Hagan mentioned, we had a large turnover on the board this time. Nine seats changed hands, which I think is the most since I started on the board twelve years ago. And we have had with our twenty-seven management personnel, twenty, it's around twenty-seven, we've had twenty-two turnover in the last two years. So there has been an enormous amount of turnover, and I think that this is a perfect time to be bringing forward someone for county manager who has extensive experience and dedication to this county, so. I would be very happy to see this board confirm the selection of Chris Corporal. Does anyone else have anything they would like to say? We are a quiet group this evening. All right, with that said, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Chris, you are on the hook. Do you want to come up and say anything right now, or do you want to wait until next month in the report of county manager? All right, thanks, Chris, without objection.
So I just want to thank you all for your support and taking and taking over this position. I have to say that I know it's probably a relatively common thing for someone to say that they're humbled by the by the support, but honestly, I'm just a little farm girl from northern Wisconsin, and I can't believe that. Well, first of all, I never could believe that I was a mom, like that anybody thought that I could raise children. I certainly don't sure exactly why anyone thinks I can be a county manager, but honestly, that's not true. I, Dunn County's been an amazing place for me to live and work over the last twenty years and raise my family. And I am super, super excited about this opportunity. There was a presenter that I've heard in my human services world, and she said that we shouldn't be afraid to say big old hairy audacious goals. And I was saying today, my big old hairy audacious goal is we're going to take over the world. We're we're going for it. So Dunn County's amazing, we're going to show the rest of the area that that's true and and we're going to do it together. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Chris. Congratulations. All right, that brings us to fourteen and almost close with announcements. I know I have something from Supervisor Larry Bjork and that our county conservationist Chase Cummings wanted to issue an invitation to an event tomorrow. So first, Larry, if you would.
I was wondering why they moved the meeting to this fourth Wednesday, and then someone says, well, because that gives you a chance, Larry, to come and tell everybody to attend if they can, the Dunn County Fair. So I'm going to do that, and the Dunn County Fair started today with entries that came in, and there was some judging of some of the the products and produce. And this is the hundred and thirty-seventh year of the your Dunn County Fair. And that even includes the year that the carnival did not operate and people of the COVID year. And the Dunn County Fair Board led by Deb Gopson had a fair that year where people came in and their items were judged, and then they went home again. Well, judges get paid and work needs to be done. And there was no revenue from anybody. The Knights of Columbus had to take a year off from collecting money at the gate. But the Dunn County Fair went on. It went on in 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 July fifteenth of nineteen eighty. When I was dairy superintendent and Keith Summerfield was the Fair Board President and the windstorm came through and flattened just about half the trees in Dunn County and Eau Claire County. The failure of Martel Mutual happened. And I said to Keith Summerfield, how can you possibly have a fair when people don't have any electricity to milk their cows, pump water, haul, have the milk picked up from their farms? And I can't remember exactly what he said. And you know, I've been wrong a time or two, and I was darn wrong that time. And Keith said, Larry, we got to have the fair. And they did that year also. So mission statement of the Dunn County Fair in the office, I thought I'd write it down and present it here tonight. The Dunn County Fair will provide entertaining and educational events for people of all ages. And then that goes on to say, if I can read the writing, our core values. We will achieve our mission by choosing age-appropriate entertainment, by hiring qualified judges to evaluate exhibits and providing a safe and secure environment. Well, you get all that, and you only got to pay five dollars to get in the gate, folks, so it's might be a best five dollars you ever spent. The fair goes through the thirty-first. And then last but not least, you had to come down, I'm not I'm not going to wear out the big something fan line again that I've used before. But you ought to come down and see those big circular fans in the fairgrounds and in the exhibit building. And and what a good job it does do for not only the livestock, but the but exhibitors and people viewing the barns. It was a fraction of ARPA money spent, but by golly, for forty-five thousand dollars, you really did a service for the the people of Dunn County. And when I left there tonight, Rich Schroder was doing a musical presentation. And he was on a stage, and you know, besides myself, we got Ron Score over there. And we didn't have a stage for the entertainment. So Ron says, I'll go to Menar or go to Fleet Farm and buy three-quarter inch plywood, two-by-twelve planks and two-by-fours. And your fellow board member here today put together six risers for the entertainment, which will include the memories coming up, I think maybe twice this week. And you know, if you had to pay somebody to do that, we wouldn't be able to afford to have a fair. And that's kind of what the Dunn County Fair is, is people stepping up and doing jobs. And when I left there tonight, Rich Schroder was singing. The steel fence post drivers were working down in the livestock barns, getting ready for the dairy show tomorrow, putting up gates, the beef show on Friday, and then, of course, the livestock sale at five o'clock on Saturday. So if you can make it, you know, five, find five dollars and come and see the large fans.
Thank you Supervisor Bjork, and thank you Supervisor Score for apparently for building a stage. Chase, did you have? At least I was told that you had an announcement on on another event. Got you running back and forth tonight.
Sick of seeing me up here yet? While you're in town, attending the fair tomorrow from one to three, there's a field day at the Red Cedar Demonstration Farm just north of the building site here, particularly on the by the Transit and Department or Highway Department Road. Just a reminder, the the Red Cedar Demonstration Farm is property owned by Dunn County. It's administered through the facilities and and Neighbor's Committee as oversight over the property itself, but the demonstration and the the work that's done on that farm is conducted with some advice and advisory from our departments, our partners with NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service, UW Extension, and students at CVTC are the ones that operate that farm. And I think it brings an incredible value to the local community here within Menominee, but also the broader county. It's an opportunity to demonstrate conservation practices in a in a setting that promotes public health and also a sustainable economic system for some farm operations that have tremendous impact on on the water quality, and like I said, the economic and public health values that we have here in Dunn County. So I encourage you as county board supervisors to to attend that. It is within your purview on within budgets of the county board and property that you own, and I think there's a value that it shares amongst the community that would be good for you to come out and see, so hope to see you there. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Jase. Do I have any other announcements that I've missed? Supervisor Zons?
Just wanted to give a little shout out to Nick Lang for stepping in as interim county manager. Just thought he should get a little public pat on the back, and thanks for doing that and and appreciate it.
Thank you.
On that note, our very own Michelle Bouchon from UW Extension made celebratory cupcakes and thank you for Chris, and thank you cupcakes for Nick, and they are back there by the coffee, so please thank Michelle and enjoy a cupcake. And if you have a per diem sheet, please turn those in.
And I I will add my thanks to Nick. He has certainly saved my butt a couple of times in the past few months. Thank you all. Our next meeting will be the Budget Workshop on August thirteenth at eight o'clock AM. Supervisor Steen will be presiding, as I have a conference out of town that I committed to before I was elected to this board seat. So thank you all, we are adjourned.